Get all these folks home early tonight.
I can't believe it's May already. How crazy is that? Okay, good evening, everybody. It is May eighth. We'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social emotional growth of all students through a supportive, collaborative, and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV and our order of business this evening is as follows. We have our open session call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, recognitions, any student presentations?
There's none tonight.
Okay, no student presentations, an opportunity for public comment, we have the athletic department budget for 2019-2020, FY20 school choice allotments, and our administrative items include the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent, do we have an assistant superintendent?
No, you know what, I left the assistant superintendent down in Bridgewater and Ms. Durand is here to present with the other things.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Will we be getting him back?
I haven't decided yet. To be determined.
Warrant approvals, approval of minutes, April 24th, 2019, acceptance of gifts, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn.
Did you read the summative? You have the old copy, can you spend that money?
Just the summative.
I'm sorry, item number four under recognitions and student presentations and then under that, number four, superintendent's 2018-2019 summative evaluation process. Thank you, Erin. I've got the old agenda currently, and is there anything else?
Is that going to be with the superintendent?
There was and it was posted and I thought Karen sent it out. It was posted, I have the copy.
Okay. Is everybody okay with adding the superintendent's 2018-2019? We're basically just talking about the process.
Yeah, yeah. We're not doing it, no, no.
So, nothing to really be prepared for tonight, but we'll outline.
And Lori, I don't have any warrant approvals to read tonight.
Okay, no warrant approvals.
I haven't signed anything.
All right, excellent. Everybody okay with the order of business? All right, so, we're going to go right down to an opportunity for public comment, seeing none. I will move on to the athletic department budget 2019-2020. You're up. Mr. Marks, that was fast. We got right to you.
Time used everything.
Well, first of all, thanks guys for having me today. I can say that throughout the first year it's been really comforting to know that the budget is supposed to be decided.
You know, level funded by the district. So, one of the things that I believe in front of you, you have kind of two different spreadsheets there, and I want to explain sort of where we're at as a department and some of the work that we've been doing and where those numbers came from. So, the top spreadsheet is pretty much the carryover from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty with a couple of adjustments there, and, you know, it's not all that much different from what you've seen in the past. Something that's been very interesting and some really good work that a lot of people in this room and the coaches and the department have done is we've done a really in-depth program analysis of each, we broke down by each individual sport and all the different, you know, subcategories that we've been using. And I had an opportunity to meet with all the coaches and, you know, we kind of hashed out what we thought, you know, should potentially live in a school budget and what shouldn't, what should be, you know, maybe fundraised for or things that are extras. So, the bottom spreadsheet, those numbers are different, okay, and that, those come from the program analysis, and I think that I'm looking forward to having further conversations with everybody in terms of what we can do potentially moving forward to address some of the needs of a growing department and a budget that I inherited and have made some adjustments on my end. So, that's sort of where we stand as of right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have from either of those two spreadsheets and go from there.
Opening it up, questions?
If you could just, I mean, you alluded to in your general comments, but there are some significant differences between sort of the FY19 and the actual needs budget, and I don't know if there's any sort of broad themes that you can describe in terms of what was being done differently. I take it this is not necessarily saying this is costing more to run, but rather more that's in the budget as opposed to something that's paid for outside the budget like using revolving funds or what have you. I wonder if you could just maybe give us a little detail on.
Yeah, I can say the two themes that I saw were in the supplies, the supplies line item for the different sports and that, you know, I think that goes with growing numbers and growing costs of things that, you know, of the equipment and what else there was. Another line item that would be, is significantly different is in the fees, and some of that is in, you know, from my perspective as the athletic director is, you know, maybe allotting some funds to add for some professional development for the coaches and things there. And like I said, I understand where we are for moving into fiscal year twenty, but it was just really eye-opening. We'd had some really good conversations on the district, you know, with the administration here about, you know, let's try and figure out really what the real costs are to run this program broken down by sport, but, you know, in real detail in terms of what it costs to run the program. We're making do with what we have or we've been able to make do with what we have, but I think it's, like I said, I'm looking forward to further discussion, you know, as we look potentially, you know, maybe something for fiscal year twenty, you know, but really for fiscal year twenty-one to make some adjustments or at the very least have those conversations and be able to share all of the data because a lot of work went into it from the athletic department and the administration to get these numbers put together. So, I'd say again, so Terry, to answer your question, a lot of it was in the, in the equipment or the supplies category and in the fees category. There are some increases in costs in terms of facility rentals that have come up. You'll see a big difference in a transportation line item there, and I can explain it in more detail at some point, but that's if we didn't ride share. So, like for instance, today if baseball and softball went together, or today I had a tennis team and a softball team share a bus, if they each had individual buses, it would be a lot more. So, there's a, there's good conversations to come in the future, but, yeah, certainly that supplies list, that stood out big time with the coaches when I sat down with them.
Now, are there things that, like, you're doing without, or is this more you're trying to just patch things together and make it work?
We are doing without some things, and the themes that, to be honest, what I heard from the coaches, they're doing plenty of fundraising outside for things that potentially should and could live within the district's budget. So, those are conversations that, you know, were good to have because I don't think those had, everything had gotten on the table for a little while, so.
No, I appreciate especially, you know, all the work that you put into doing the actual needs. I mean, I think that's important for us as well, you know, and we always have sort of a list of things that really should be part of what we're doing but can't always be because of just our limitations, but I think it's a really important part of understanding, you know, where we're at, where we're headed, and it does take a lot of thinking outside the box, but if you don't have it formulated, then it's much more difficult to get there.
Exactly. That was our whole thought process was let's get it all out on the table, let's figure out what it is and what we get, how the budget plays out. We know what we need to make up otherwise.
I appreciate that, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is on our summer retreat, so, I mean, these are just numbers and, you know, it doesn't really mean anything to me. I see that, oh, this is $20,000 more.
Yep.
Right. I don't know what that $20,000 means, and that's something that obviously we'll dig into at the summer retreat. It'll be tangible. It's like, okay, if we in the future make a decision on, okay, we have this funding and we're going to shift it one way or the other, to be able to make it real that, hey, this impacts kids in this way relative to some other place within the district. So, I look forward to getting, because this is a great first step, but, you know, putting some meaning behind that difference is important.
And we've got plenty of that information, and I'll just reiterate, I'm looking forward and the department is looking forward to having those conversations to get everything out, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Of course.
I want to clarify a couple of things too as you're looking at this document, but also with regard to, when you go ahead and make a motion with regard to the budget itself, we're actually just talking about the revolving fund at this point in time. I want to be clear as folks are out there listening, we do have some of the costs of the athletic department embedded into the operating budget, which was voted on last week at town meeting. So, the true nature, the true cost that Mr. Marks has come up with is close to $925,000 to run the athletic department as is constantly constructed. So, transportation costs, for instance, Barbara may at times have to shift some funding in our operating budget into the transportation line items for athletics throughout the year. This budget itself, this is the one I inherited ten years ago as well, in terms of the revolving fund budget. And it's critical to know that when we look at it in the summer retreat, transportation, for instance, did not include and does not include even in this revolving budget, teams that qualify for districts, right? So, when you go to Bourne for hockey four times, you're looking at another, you know, four or $5,000 in transportation costs. So, where we have to, you know, we have to pay for it, so it can't come out of the revolving fund if it's not there. So, we've got to make modifications within our own transportation line item in the general fund.
So, if I can just, to clarify that point too, because I think I was confused when I asked my first question, Mr. Marks, but as I'm looking at this, this includes as a budget funds that are drawn from the general fund and the revolving, at least on the spreadsheet.
Okay, yes, sorry.
And so, it shows nine twenty-five, that's kind of the cost, but doesn't this sort reflect where the money's coming from, revolving versus general?
Nope.
No, but it is.
Part of it does, yeah.
If I'm looking at the bottom sheet, it says.
So, Mark, if you look at the bottom sheet, the nine twenty-five in expenses, underneath that, the carryover and the FY20 revenue are revolving funds. So, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is, and then the operating budget is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
And that's the general fund.
Correct, right. That's what's consistent between the two line items, if you notice.
And that's the same number since you were there too?
Yeah. Well, no, no, that operating, the number coming out of the actual general fund has increased a little bit because the salary line item has increased over ten years. You haven't adjusted that, it's just all come out of the revolving, so.
So, we'll discuss this more in detail at the summer. I do have, just, I'm just curious, like, officials in your proposed FY20 budget, and then it goes up in your actual, so, are we, you're having more referees or something?
So, again, accounting for potential playoff games and scrimmages, and that hasn't always been, well, I don't know, because I wasn't there when the previous budget was created, but I'm trying to account for what's at most, so we don't get hit with those fees at the end.
The practice has been to assume that's not happening, but it really is happening.
Like, we'd like to shift that to assume that it will be happening, yes, or I would like to shift that thinking, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably good for the psychology aspect of it as well. We're going to assume that all our teams are going to the playoffs.
That's right. That's right. But again, the overall theme is that, you know, that there's some really positive momentum coming from the coaches and the department, even just gathering this information and having these discussions. So, again, I can't say it enough, we're looking forward to continuing the conversations, and thank you again for supporting this program and our kids, and we'll have further conversations this summer.
Thank you. Did the year go by fast?
Yes and no, at the same time. It's been fantastic, but yeah.
But it's been a busy year.
It's been a busy year, but that's okay.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, next up.
Well, do we need to vote on this?
We do. Thank you.
She hasn't been here a while.
There wasn't.
Oh, we voted this?
There was a motion, I know if we're going to typically vote it just because.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same thing we did with the, with the.
Pittaway.
Pittaway, because that actually, you know, I mentioned it when we talked about the minutes, you know, the confusing part of that was, that was really just the revolving expenses. It was not a budget for preschool. It was the revolving expenses relative to that, so.
But also, it says, no action needed, so are we, can we vote on something that didn't say?
We can do whatever we want, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Who has a cut of motion?
Revenue expenses is, I'll, Barbara, give the language she would be comfortable with.
So, I think the motion would be to approve the athletic revolving budget of three hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars for FY20.
So, approve the.
So moved.
Say it again, oh, okay.
Second?
Second. Did you get that, Erin? Yeah. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Nine, nine, excellent, thank you. FY20 school choice allotments.
So, Ms. Durand, you can just stay up there, partly because the, thanks, Mr. Marks.
Thank you, thanks, Steve.
At the last meeting, we had to go through the process to determine whether or not we were going to continue in school choice and offer seats, and the board elected to have five seats at freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior level for next year, pre-K through eight are shut off, there are no more open seats. We're not offering any seats at this time due to enrollment. As you know, I'm quite concerned long-term with regard to the revenue that's coming in for choice and how that's going to potentially negatively impact our overall budget and the need to start moving some of our expenses such as supplies, instructional supplies, which is what we'll talk about specifically here, into the operating budget. So, what I had Barbara do is we sat down, we said, how are we being equitable to all of the buildings with regard to distribution of choice funds? Since I've been here, so in ten years, it's been the same amount of money that has been distributed to each building. So, we took a little harder, in-depth look as to the funding from the operating budget as well as the choice funds, and Barbara explained the process she took and conversations she had with other finance directors, et cetera, so.
And to be clear, it wasn't the same amount, it hasn't been modified to make, it's not the same for all the buildings.
No, 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 the dollar amount has not been modified for the buildings.
It's been automated what each building.
Every building has had the same amount of money for, allocated to them over the course of those five years.
Because we're going to make a point that it's not the same.
It's not the same as each other, it's the same as they've always been getting.
Good point. Differentiate between the buildings.
Gotcha. All right, Ms. Durand.
Okay, so, over the course of my years here, I have had at least twice that school committee has asked me to review the school choice allotments, but we've just looked at the school choice piece, how much was coming in and how much was being given to each school depending on their student enrollment. And it was pretty consistent. What we did differently this year is we looked at what are we giving them for supplies in their general fund budget and added that to what we're giving them to the school choice to look to see if it was equitable across both funding sources, and that's where we found some of the discrepancies. So, the top of your sheet lists the general fund budget for instructional supplies for each building. What we give them for school choice allotment, which gives them a total budget, so for instance, Warren has thirty-two eight ninety in the general fund, they receive twenty-three thousand in school choice, so they have fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Their enrollment was six hundred and sixty-one when I pulled these numbers, which means based on the total enrollment of the four schools, they have twenty-four percent of student enrollment and are only receiving twenty percent of instructional supply budget. So, if you, if I multiply that out, the per pupil cost based on the total cost of the four buildings and the enrollment of the four buildings is a hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents per pupil. So, if we multiply that by their enrollment, Warren, which is getting fifty-five eight ninety, should really be getting sixty-nine one seventy-four in instructional supplies. So, they are short just over thirteen thousand dollars. Mendez is over by almost twenty-five thousand dollars. Middle school is short, just under twelve thousand dollars, and the high school is pretty even, it's only three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, the analysis that I did below is how to take the school choice allotment, and we talked about increasing some instructional supplies because the dollar amount, the total dollar amount has not increased over the years that I've been here, and then try, trying to make it fairer, more fair across the four schools without hurting Mendez. Now, I did this with a pure one-to-one per pupil average. I did put it out to my listserv and ask other business managers what they do, and many of them use a weighted average, and what came across the most was elementary schools should be a one-point-oh, middle school should be a one-point-one, and high school should be a one-point-five. I think that's something we should shoot for. I think it's a huge jump in one year. So, Jim and I talked it over and we stayed with the one-to-one weighted average for all of our buildings, and we're proposing that Warren School get an additional ten thousand dollars for a total of thirty-three thousand dollars in school choice money. Mendez School stayed the same at twenty-six thousand dollars, the middle school, an increase of ten thousand dollars to thirty-two thousand dollars, and the high school, an increase of nine thousand dollars for a total of thirty-eight thousand. And that reduces the shortage of the Warren School and the high school slightly, reduces the overage at Mendez to make up for that, and again, the high school stays relatively same, it goes to five hundred and thirty dollars, which is pennies.
So, can I ask, Barbara, is there any, well, first of all, I guess, we call it instructional supplies, is that a restriction that we put on it, or is that all the money that can only be spent on instructional supplies?
No, it's a restriction that we put on it. School choice can legally be used for any legal purpose.
That's what I thought. So, we call it instructional supplies, and then I guess my follow-up question is, like, how much oversight do we have, do we take a really close look at what the principals are spending the money on, you know?
We do. Would I say that the boundaries are pretty far?
Right.
Based on the building.
Based on the building and what they're telling me they need.
Right. So, and I, just asking this as a hypothetical question, not to cause any trouble, but I want to understand, like, if somebody was spending ten thousand dollars, like, on pencils, but somebody else was really putting a lot of effort into thinking about, you know, books or something like that, then does it make sense to give the money to the building where they're really utilizing it in the most efficient way, or is it more about just giving everybody the fair dollar amount and leave it to them?
For the most part.
Not saying that with not trusting the people that are in the positions of making these decisions.
For the most part, yeah, for the most part, they use it for textbooks, consumables. So, I think they're using it to the intent.
Like, across the board?
Across the board, yeah.
Pointing any fingers?
You know, occasionally, you know, they'll request, you know, I want to do a neighborhood, outdoor reach program, is that instructional supply? No, but it's great, this is the money you need to help you do that.
Right.
You know, so, I think most of the principals do a good job.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think my questions kind of fall in line with where Lori is going, and just, I guess for me, what's most important is we're allocating the school choice to where there's a need, and so I want to make sure that, I guess, that you're comfortable that, based on the needs that are being presented to you, I'm saying this to both of you, by your building principals, that we're addressing them on sort of equal footing so that, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we've got. Nobody's sort of like that we're doing a better job of taking care of the kids at Warren than we are at Mendez, because to me, it's like, if there are just more needs in one building or another, at the extreme, I'd say, well, if we had to allocate all the school choice money to that building for a particular year, that's fine with me as long as that's consistent with sort of our set of values and what's important and what the needs are there. So, I mean, like I said, I'm not questioning any of this because I don't know the weeds, but I think just conceptually, I don't know that I necessarily want us to always be tied to sort of an idea of equity unless that equity is really about outcomes and support for our kids, right? And I think it is, I mean, I think what you're saying.
Yeah. So, Mark, I didn't do it this year, but either last year or the year before, we did go to the schools and say, before we go to school committee for the allotment, give us what your intent is to use this money for, and at that time, we brought it to all of you, so you had an idea of what their needs were. We can certainly do that again for next year if you'd like to see that information.
Really trust your collective judgment, you know, as two of you, the administrative team, Paul Vera as well, and it's just, you know, I want to make sure that, at least for myself, I'm expressing sort of the way I'm thinking about this, this kind of issue more than it is having any concern that, really, you know, that we're doing something and say, well, we've got to give everybody something. I think, I understand there could be morale issues if we didn't, but, again, it's really just making sure that regardless of whether the money's come from school choice or from operational budget, that we're doing the best we can to address student needs wherever they might be.
Barbara, do you have any idea what our paper budget is for year?
Paper? No, I'd have to pull that data.
It'd be interesting, like, you know, take your time, but I just think there's a lot of, if we're looking at trying to increase those multiplication factors of in the schools, like, a little bit is going to help, and whatever we can do using technology and Google, our Google Classroom and the Google Suite that we have, there's a lot of paper that.
There is, but there's a huge challenge with that too. I mean, we're, this board and we'd have to determine, are we going to the one-to-one model, are we going to have students have that device with them, what type of professional development are we going to invest in so our staff feels comfortable with that as well? It's not just as simple as let's get rid of the paper. As much as it is, we have to make sure that whatever avenue we do take, that there truly might be a cost savings as well, because that's not always the case. So, it's a wonderful point, it's just, we're not there yet, I don't think as a community or a, or a school district to say this is the route we're taking from an instructional standpoint as well. So, even, you know, having students have devices, the teaching staff has to be comfortable using those devices to teach. It's a very different methodology to teach that way.
And I'm even more, let's start with the parent paperwork before we even tackle the kid's paperwork, because I think that's an easier one.
Sure, absolutely.
So, along your line, Erin, not only is the cost of the paper, but we also have a per-print cost on each of our copier machines, and we've seen different buildings fluctuate from year to year, and we call and say, you know, what's going on with this copier? And it'll be, the teacher doesn't like the textbook, they're copying out something else, so, okay. So, okay, we need to look at the textbook then, you know, so, we're working on those things.
At some point, it makes more sense to buy the textbook than to make, make a million copies of it, right?
Right.
But you're talking, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars for a textbook series too. And that's the, i- i- there's always this, uh, challenge, and I look at the high school as the challenge, right? So, I know for a fact that the high school, they're using those choice funds to offset, you know, just think about labs and lab experiences. In chemistry, or biology, or, um, physics. The amount of materials they have to purchase to run a lab, or an art class, and the number of art classes we offer. It's twelve thousand dollars a year, probably just for the lab materials. Uh, at least it was seven years ago when I was doing this, because all my choice money went there at the end of-
Right, because back in the recession, all those budgets were slashed.
So, they slashed it all, right? So, the, so, and that's my greater point, two thousand six, two thousand seven. We weren't talking about choice funds being distributed to the schools. Because that, those funds were part of the operating budget, they were already embedded. We have to get back to doing that because we will not have the choice revenue in the next few years. One could argue, hey, just where the, wherever the choice revenue is, tho- that school's the one being impacted. So, let's apply all of the choice revenue to those particular schools, right?
It's going to be down to the high school eventually.
Exactly, right? And, but yet, we have never added those funds back into-
Right.
The, the schools, the supply lines before that. That's the struggle we're going to have. And, um, to, to remove this, the, the school choice, um, funding to all the other schools. To me would be, um, really detrimental to the experience of those students in all the schools. I was shocked when we look at the Mendez, and Barbara and I have our own, um, theory as to why it's still so high. And, um, and why it was never touched in years past, but, um, we'll keep that to ourselves. And, uh, because it's just a theory. And, uh, but this at least is an opportunity for the other buildings. Listen, Warren has grown, and the ancillary materials that go with some of the programming. They're not able to purchase, and this will help them purchase those things. Less reliance on PTO, less reliance on other outside organizations to supply. Yes, we've gotten into the, you talked about pencils though, have, we've gotten into this notion that parents are responsible for providing tissues and pencils. And that's not their responsibility, uh, in my personal opinion. It's our responsibility as a district to provide those types of things. I don't like getting the supply list, uh, for my elementary kid when I was, when they were in elementary. Hey, can you please, each student send in X, Y, and Z?
Right. But it's necessary, and you guys can correct me, because my memory might not be exactly right on the numbers. But I think for an example, what I'm remembering during one of our former conversations about this. Like, the art supply went from like seven thousand dollars to like fifteen hundred or something. Does that sound about right? Like, that's what they should be getting, what they always were getting. And then it got slashed in the recession to maybe all the way down to a thousand fifteen hundred. And we've been making it up since then with these school choice ones. Not, not back up to the seven thousand, but just fifteen hundred's clearly not adequate either. So, I think that's just a, an example of how this has been working.
Yeah, so, a, a couple of points, I, I echo, I think I heard from Mark and Laurie in that, um, you know, I, I think we need. I'd be supportive of putting it wherever it, it is supposed to go or is meaningful. And I would even take it a step further and like, if we're having, if the, and I don't know that this is the case. But if the special education sub-separate programs are, they, you know, if we have more enrollment there and they have more need for supplies or whatever. Then, you know, that figures into it, that it's not just a straight per pupil, because pupil A and pupil B have different needs, right? And I know you're probably getting, you know, eventually mature this to where we're, we're, we're doing better with that. But the challenge I have with what we're talking about is, uh, coalescing the two statements. Of a concern about school choice funds in the future. And needing to absorb school, school choice funding into our budget. While upping school choice allocations here to only make exacerbate what we need to. So, I'm trying to say, the trend of school choice revenue is going down. We're increasing the yearly allotment here, because I'm assuming if we do it this year, we've got to do it next year, right? We're not going to say, hey, you're getting twenty thousand dollars more this year, next year you're not going to get-
A percentage though, right? Like, they're only always going to get a percentage of what's available.
Well, there's a net increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Right, for now, right.
Right, no, but it's not going to be less than twenty-nine thousand dollars next year, is what I'm saying. So, the revenue, school choice revenue is going down. We're going to take more school choice yearly, put towards this. You know, speeding up the decline of that. And we need, we've said we need to, uh, bring it into our operating. So, I'm trying to take those conflicting things and say, okay, why are we doing this? I'm, I'm not saying the need isn't there, obviously it is, right? But, um, should we find this twenty-nine thousand in the operating budget as opposed to? We're saying we need to absorb school choice, what we're using school choice for in the operating budget anyway. But we're exacerbating it at the same time, in the next sentence, right? So, I'm trying to figure out-
It's not a valid point.
Figure out why we're doing that as opposed to trying to find the twenty-nine. If the twenty-nine thousand is the right step, I'm not saying it's not, it's probably, you know, it should probably be more than that, right? But we're speeding the decline of the, of the school choice funds. And exacerbating what we're, what the challenge we're already stating. So, I'm, I'm trying to understand whether there's a different approach that we should be looking at.
No, I, no, I think that's a very valid, uh, argument on both sides right there. To say, how do we absorb not twenty-nine thousand dollars into the operating budget currently that, that's been voted on and approved? As opposed to speeding up the use of the, of-
Right, because we're, we're going to, we're, we're saying we're going to eventually need to do it anyway, and we just made the stuff we need to, we need to incorporate into our budget larger. By twenty-nine thousand, right? So, um, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm not saying it's the wrong thing to do, I'm just, I'm just trying to, those are two conflicting thoughts, right?
So, I think you have two opportunities before you then this evening, is to, you know, look at the model up above. And reallocate the exact same funding that was, uh, provided last year, uh, and leave the twenty-nine thousand out of it. We have some new areas though, that we're looking to, to redistribute some of those choice funds in.
Right, and I, I wanted to bring that up. Actually, it's, it's this sheet in your book that we're actually asking you to vote on, a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars total. We've always only done the four buildings and IT, out-of-school choice funds. So, we're looking to give SPED two thousand dollars for some of their needs, Pittaway two thousand. And Athletics five thousand to try to start offsetting, i- it's pennies. But, um, the athletic budget just needs some help here, and if we can pull a little bit of money out of here. To your other point about, I, I agree, we're, we're using more money. But I think we're asking you to do that and opening up the conversation to say, okay, now, next year, when we come to you with the next budget. We're going to be putting in for more instructional supply in the general fund, and this is why.
Yeah, so as long as we have a plan for that, you know, and, and that's why I asked the question, because, you know, uh, because we're saying we need to absorb this. If the number's X, we need to absorb X. And what we're doing right now is we're saying, okay, we're kicking the can and saying, X is going to grow by twenty-nine thousand. If we couldn't figure out the twenty-nine thousand dollars this year, we're, we're making a larger sum, and what's our solution long-term? So, it sounds like you, yeah.
Right, it sounds like you already thought ahead.
You were already having the conversations, but, um, but I, I want to make sure we're, we're understanding that we're not just creating a bigger problem, obviously.
For context along that problem, Sin, can you, um, give us a sense of what we think school choice funds are looking like? I mean, I, maybe it's in here? It's on the next page, okay. Yeah, I'm looking on the computer, so I'm not sure I've got.
Um, so, this year, well, last year, we collected about three hundred and fifty thousand in school choice funds. Next year, I'm projecting four hundred and fourteen, which is an increase, but there's a reason. This year, we have a school choice student who went out of district. And we are paying that cost this year. And talking with, with the Department of Ed and SPED and all of that, we've put in for the reimbursement, we don't get it till next year. So, we're paying for it this year, but next year, the projected revenue is going to go up by the circuit breaker cost of that student.
Okay. So, their, their town is paying, but we won't get it till next year.
And their town files for reimbursement through circuit breaker.
Okay.
So, our balance is, is about, because I'm looking at seven twelve, to seven thirty-two?
Uh, so, at the end of June eighteen, we had seven hundred and thirty-two thousand in the account. So, we started this year with seven thirty-two. Uh, we're projecting four hundred and fourteen to come in this year. And expending seven twenty-two. So, we use four hundred and sixty-eight thousand in budget offsets, which next year, we've already reduced to two seventy-five, knowing that we don't have all that money to spend. And it includes a hundred and thirty thousand in SPED out of district and transportation, which we'll get the revenue for next year. So, I'm projecting at the end of June this year, we'll have about four hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, as an ending balance. And what we try to do with our revolving funds is whatever revenue comes in this year. Should be carried over to be spent in the next year. You don't spend this year what you're getting this year, because you'd never know if they're going to pull it from you or not. So, we want to carry that four twenty-three over and use it in FY twenty.
Understood. Any other questions, comments? So.
Uh, one more.
One more.
Do we have a target number, uh, I mean, on the, what we want to maintain as balance, is it going to be that four twenty? What you're just saying, so we're going to try, are we going to try to keep our school choice revolving account?
I'm going to try to keep the ending balance to what the revenues were collected that year. So, as our revenues go down, the ending balance will be going down.
So, we have fifty-three choice students right now, and, in the district. So, de- depending upon how many leave the district and actually fill those slots. Which will have less slots available, uh, as time goes on. And because we do have choice students in the middle school, we do have choice students in, um, the elementary schools. We're only adding, you know, so the high school loses thirteen kids, that incoming freshman class is five, right? So, there's, we're, we're already losing, you know, six or thirty thousand dollars. Bless you, so. And that's why I'm saying, we, you know, Barbara and I have had this conversation about the long-term vision of, no matter how we look at this. There's two hundred and seventy-five thousand that we're offsetting our general operating budget for already, within the budget that was passed at town meeting. That's the number that we're using. If, if everything was to stay the same and we only had the two seventy-five, that's, you know, that would typically have to be added into the operating budget as well. In addition to the hundred and fifty-three that we're looking for. So, you're talking four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that our budget could go up and should go up. To offset all costs that are, are expenses that, that exist if we didn't have choice revenue. That's the, you know, that's what happened in two thousand six oh seven, to your point, Laurie, was, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars that they cut out of the budget. And it all came from supplies and instructional supplies and textbook lines. When I go back and look at the library budget, it was twelve thousand dollars just for the library in oh six. It got cut to zero. And so, at the high school. So, that's how we've been backfilling, um, you know, with the choice funding. I guess it's a good problem to have if, if our chapter seventy continues to, to increase, based on the volume of students and the enrollment. But you can't, you know, we can't count on that. I think that our adjustment was made this year, um, so.
Anybody else? What's the motion?
Well.
To approve the FY nineteen twenty school choice allotments as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Barbara. It, it is a challenge.
I already always be the Debbie Downer, but.
No, no, I, I, those are-
We need that.
I feel like I'm, I'm like, my head's a kind of foggy today, it's like, it's, just nothing's making sense.
No, I mean, I-
I just don't like downward trends.
Well, this is something, I mean, we'll continue talking about this, this summer?
We will, I mean, we're going to continue to talk about the long-range forecast of our, of our budget and our-
These things are going to impact the budget.
Absolutely, and the, again, the greatest concern I have is that we, we should not be relying upon these one-time funds. To, to run an operating budget. They're ancillary, they should be helping us in add enhancements to our programming. Should, you know, the art department need something, you know, additional to run their budget, or a science lab, or, um. Then that's what we should be using. Think about textbook adoption, uh, you know, Paul's going to come to you, you know, in the summer and probably in the fall and say, listen, we've done a, a really, um. In-depth review of our K-five literacy program. And if, here's the textbook that we're looking to adopt, uh, K-five. So, there's consistency, and there's this professional development that has to go with it. But, but you're talking about two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. Probably over a three to four-year window to pay for that. That's significant. And that's, you know, that's why we're having teachers review those things, so. But even the supply lines, this will help Mr. Regan at Warren with the two new classrooms, the modulators, right? So, he's got, he needs that supply line to help fund those two rooms as well. To, to your point about special education in the classrooms that we're creating, that extra money is going to s- help him next year specifically, which he wouldn't have had.
All right.
All right.
So, the superintendent's twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen summit of evaluation process, it's hard to believe, but here we are.
Again.
Yeah, it's that time of year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thanks very much.
You know, and unlike the check-in, um, that seemed like it was just a few weeks ago, I guess it was a couple months ago, a few months ago. But this is the, um, the real, um, evaluation for the superintendent. And that we need to take the time to, um, to, to do the process, both with comments, um, with all the goals. And to go make time to review the evidence. You've all done this before, so you don't need my speech, you make time to review the evidence, right?
You seem to pick us on the butt to get it done on time.
Yeah, and, and, and I do need enough time to get it done, because it, it, the narrative requires, um, me trying to, first of all. Foremost, make it, make it meaningful for Jim. But also to make sure that all of your voices are represented in the, um, narrative. As well as, um, computing all the, um, it sounds really simple, computing all the scores, but, um, there's, there are districts that are in litigation over it.
Really?
I don't know if you've read any news, Mark, so, you know, so have you seen, seen that?
Oh, really? Oh, my gosh, I didn't follow that.
About, you know, just the subset, which, which subsection, um, is meant to be the majority of the superintendent's overall review. Because if you calculate it one way, it could come out this way, if you calculate it another way, it could come out that way. And, and in our superintendent's case, it's tied to his, um, contract.
So, just make it be the lower, so we'll save some money.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything other than just-
You can always go to zero, it doesn't matter what the rating is, you still have that option.
I'm just providing everybody with the important side, take good care with it, get it to me on time.
We, we, we love you, but we're giving you zero.
Would you like it, Laurie, and when are we doing it?
We're doing it at the next meeting.
Twenty seconds, I think I wrote-
Which is-
Fifteenth, are we going to do it in two weeks?
Yes.
Wednesday.
And at seventeenth, she needs to buy a room.
I think it was the seventeenth, Friday the seventeenth.
Is when it's due.
You need to have information to Mr. Dosti.
Right. And then it'll be presented on the twenty-second. So, before then, yeah, is the opportunity to review the evidence, please, for all of us, myself included. And then, um, your findings to me on Friday, and then the report in open meeting to Mr. Adams on that.
And, and then, from a process perspective, do we want to do what we did last time where you, you supply that to us at the meeting? Or do you, do we want to publish it ahead of time? Those are two options.
How did you find value? I think we, um, what, what would you like to see?
I'm asking it to the group, just to see what people want to do, that, those are two options.
I think we did last, what did we do last year?
Last year, she, she gave it to us, uh, uh, at the meeting.
At the meeting.
At the meeting?
But if you want to see it beforehand, it has to be published, um, to the whole community at the same time.
It just has to be, it has to be, it has to be open to the public, so we can put on the website or wherever.
Your choices are to see it for the first time at the meeting, or to see it for the first time in some sort of public.
With the public.
I liked how it worked last year, um, we, we got it before then, at the meeting.
Right, I mean, we had them in here check-in, and part- Right, I mean, we had them in here check-in and part of the purpose of that is so that everybody has an idea, I think, of the direction and, and uh, Mr. Adams as well. So um, while hopefully we'll all be very detailed in our um, comments and concerns and praises, um, there shouldn't be any real surprises, right? That this, if the system worked properly. So I'm comfortable presenting it to all of you that evening as long as you are as well.
Yeah.
That, that's honestly, that's my preference mostly because I feel like, um, because this has to be public record and would otherwise have to be disseminated. You could have somebody who's seeing it four hours before I get a chance to read it and be aware of it and.
Yeah, right, I agree. I think you're at the first one, yes.
So it's positive or negative.
I agree, yes.
I think we all oughta have the opportunity to see it first before the world does.
Yeah, I agree.
Particularly when it's gonna be really a draft and we would have to vote to accept afterwards, so.
Agreed.
Um, I'd, I'd prefer to do it the way we've done in the past.
Okay.
Excellent. All right, anything you wanna add, Ms. Adams?
No.
And so, can we just drop in to see the evidence or do you want us to give you a heads up that we're coming in?
Yeah. Uh, give Karen a heads up.
Tell Karen we're gonna come in.
But, but if, if you also wanna take the time just to sit with me and ask me questions before you finalize anything, please do. Set a time up with Karen and I'll make myself clearly available. The challenges we don't collect, as you know, as you've looked at, you know, the, the evidence, it's not like we're putting in twenty pieces of evidence for every standard or, or element or indicator. It just would be, you know, binders upon binders and it's, that doesn't really even do justice to what we're doing or the things that we're trying to accomplish. You know, you, you have the idea of the SMART goals that we set uh, as a committee that you agreed upon and then there are, you know, areas of, you know, I'm pretty um, self-reflective in the sense that if it's not met, it's not met and there, there are reasons why. And you'll know that ahead of time and if you have questions as to why or what are the next steps, that's really a, um, a good conversation to have with me. Because I think goals are fluid, I think uh, we can meet parts of them and then the other parts might have to roll into another year because we focus so intently on a couple different pieces.
Wouldn't some of the goals, I'm surprised it's right here, but it, some of the goals were, I've said it a couple years.
They were intended to be that way. It's not necessarily written that way, Mark, though, when I went, when I back, went back to reread them and to prepare information for you. It's not necessarily, it doesn't read that way. The intention was there, uh, but, um, and I can think of one off the top of my head when we're thinking of reviewing the Mindes academic program, the Pittaway preschool program, and the third one was uh, the ELL program, like all three of those really heavy, well, we've got two of them completely done. Now, we've still gotta make some decisions about, you know, and that's a summer conversation, uh, but the ELL piece has started. We've made adjustments because of our budget and we knew what was going on, but the true evaluation of the ELL and, and are we meeting the needs of our kids, isn't completed yet. And that's gonna be a process for Ms. Silva going into next year, so.
So a, a question for the group as well, I know in the past we've, we've asked at the meeting for input from our, our student representative, but as it relates, you know, she, she obviously can't participate in the formal review, but the, the summary that we do provide you feedback that you read, is that something we would like, you know, heard despite?
My feeling is it's always welcome, but I would never wanna put our student representative at the spot.
Right, well, it, it, it wouldn't be separated, but, but, you know, so it's not in the, it's not in the numbers, it's not in the form, but, but in just the general feedback that you summarize, you know, in, in a, in a statement. You know, personally, I, I would, you know, like to offer the, our student representative to also provide you some feedback and that.
Absolutely, yes, and I know Ms. Adams really appreciates that feedback.
But I, I'm, I'm fine if I, if I'm, if, if we say, hey, you know, that's, you know, we don't wanna do that.
No, I think it's a great idea if.
Because that, that part of it isn't, isn't, isn't a.
If they want.
Isn't a, uh, you know, something that affects his actual review because that's, that's the form.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Mark, I know you're contemplating what that means legally and stuff, I mean.
Yeah, I'm pondering, I'm pondering. Well, I'll tell you why, you know, I'm pondering is because I, I've had many times with my professional work, um, where clients have, have posed questions like, um, well, if a random school committee member wants to conduct and, uh, to include in their evaluation what they're, what they're learning from other members of the public. So you, it's sort of the, in, it was the kind of, in my world, the joke is the diner, whatever down it is, it's, they've got the equivalent of a diner. Everybody just goes and gossips. Here, it might be Sunnyside or something like that. And um, you know, and, and there's sort of this desire to vaguely reference information from the outside world. And, you know, what I usually tell people is, look, what, what you really oughta be focusing on is what you know. The fact that there is rumor, speculation, secondhand stories, figure out whether they're true or not, but generally stay away from looking at outside sources.
He's calling you a gossip person, right?
No, I'm not, this is nothing, Nicole, of course.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
So, but I think at the same time, um, you know, the evaluation, the formal document that we will vote on will either represent the, well, it will, whatever we want, it will represent at least the opinion of the majority of this committee and most likely with history, all five of us. And so to that extent, you know, to have the input of our student rep to provide a perspective, because your perspective is, at least for me, one of the few student perspectives I get because we see you and, and I think that's valuable to, to, to look for. Um, you know, I, I guess I'm not sure exactly what you're suggesting in terms of how it might be included.
So, so she prepares that, that, the paragraph or two, that summer, that summary, that, that isn't, you know, the, the formal form, right? And I'm talking about, you know, our representative being up the slide.
Let me make this suggestion, um, since typically, you know, this meeting that we have at the end of May is usually the last meeting that the student rep, you Nicole in this case, would have with, of the particular committee, usually. Because often after the election, the committee changes and then it's new members and that's why we do the evaluation when we do. So while that might not be your last meeting, in other years, it might be your last meeting with, with this group. So what I think would be really valuable in general is to get some feedback about your experience with the group.
With the group, maybe, sure.
Like with all of us, and you know, if you wanna single out something about the superintendent and your, what you've learned from just sitting here, not just kinda like what you're hearing out there to Mark's point, but, or, and I'm, I would welcome any feedback for our group as well or your experience being part of the group, um, that could help us for the next time we have a student on the board. So that's, what I wanna say is it's welcome, it's not required, and I think if we put it that way, um, just your, your feedback of, of your experience overall and anything that you wanna add, based on your own observation.
Yeah, I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, Paul is, I think, making a different point, which is really specific to Jim's eval. And again, I, I, I think at the end of the day, the evaluation that the school committee votes on will be the document you put together. Um, even if you pulled it out of thin air, if we all voted, it's, it's what it is.
The only act, information that I would have access prior, prior to that putting together is that.
Right, of course. So I, you know, I don't think it's inappropriate, Paul, to, you know, give Nicole the opportunity or student rep to do it, I think, um, you know, like you said, the, the value of student opinion, student perspective is really important.
And, and I'm saying just to include it in, in the, in the, in the summary statement, not obviously have her put any numbers or any ratings or anything that's, that's uh,
Do the ratings, right.
Right, yes.
That's concrete or have it fill out.
Mr. Adams, I mean, if I may ask, Mr. Adams, if whether you have any concerns about that, I don't even remember what your contract says about it.
Nothing.
All, all the, all the matters is the ratings in the contract.
She's all decided.
No, so, right. No, so I think, I mean, certainly it's silent to that and I would wager we would be one of the only districts to do that. Which, again, I have no issues with that either, and we're probably the only district that, that actually ties my contract into the evaluative, uh, the rating.
We'll see what she says, maybe we'll make it a regular thing or you'll be like, run for the hills, I don't know.
Sure. Right. So, I mean, again, so part of it is, I, I think.
And I don't mean to put you on, it, it is not a requirement, but uh.
She can think about it and if she wants to.
Make sure it's.
And it can be an overall experience, uh, that you've had within, I mean, to me, I look at it as a frame, framework. She can't, she can't necessarily look at the, or she can, she can go online and read it, right? She can look at the, the, uh, the rubric for evaluation of a superintendent, well, that's, that's not what we're looking for her to do because that's your job, that's your role.
Right, yeah, right.
It, it's offering some, um, you know, feedback with regard to the experiences you've had in the actual public schools and this, and could be pointedly, uh, this is the superintendent and the things that have been accomplished since you've been in the school, since I've been superintendent, or your experience this year is, is more exciting.
And, and you say that we're, we might be the only ones that potentially do this. You know, I talked to lots of different people and lots of different, I think we're also one of the few districts where I would say ninety percent of the students or more know the superintendent, right?
Oh, yeah.
That, that our super, our.
They may not be happy about it.
Our, our administration.
No, it's fine. It's, it's to Mark's point, as long as my evaluation's not done through Facebook, I, I actually have a better chance of actually being successful and have a better rating.
But, but, but I, I do talk to several, several other people in just different districts and, you know, I, I think it is that our, you know, you, Paul are in the building, so they may not, to, to the level they might, you know, you, or not know you personally. They're like, okay, I, you know, I can identify this guy, I know him, so I think from that perspective, we have students that could, you know, provide some input. And, and just, you know, I'm, hey, this is what I think of our superintendent.
And I'm totally fine with it.
I think we all learned so much from the, the student perspective.
Sure.
And you've always, everything you contribute has always been really helpful and thoughtful and thoughtful, and so you're invited, if you wish, to share your, your input and if not, it's okay.
She's like, I'm graduating.
Yes, please.
Do homework.
She's like, I, I do enough reading, I don't wanna invite you clowns.
What do you have for AP tomorrow?
Okay, so I think, I think we're good with that.
Give her the opportunity.
Superintendent's report.
So, uh, it'd be quick.
Awesome.
Right, uh, so, town meeting last week, uh, thank you to the voters and the
Town meeting, I forgot that part.
overwhelming support of, of, of the budget and the initiatives of the community as well, not just the schools. Uh, last week, um, myself, Dr. Kyra, Dr. Vera, we were at Framingham State, uh, we had an opportunity to talk to their edu, some of their education students who are graduating, uh, and the things that we're looking for as leaders of school districts and building principals. Uh, it was a wonderful event for us, not that many students showed up, but it was also in their final exam week, which is fine. So actually, they've invited us to come in the fall, uh, and in the spring to actually present to classes. Um, so we've been a lot of inroads, we've probably been at Framingham five, six times in the past year and a half, whether on campus to advertise the Ashland Public Schools and/or to talk to their, their students in the education department. So we just created some good inroads. Today, Bridgewater State, that's our second, it was our second day, uh, second annual visit to Bridgewater to do recruiting as well. Uh, we've done a number of recruiting fairs, Hopington a week ago as well was well-received. We probably had forty to fifty um, graduates, um, or soon-to-be graduates, uh, come in and hand resumes and it's so much nicer, uh, when you got an elementary school and a second grade teacher, we get two hundred resumes. And that's a lot of work to go through those to determine whether or not we're gonna invite someone in for an interview. And so to meet people, uh, and who are online and through school spring and now you got a document and you've, you've actually interacted with that individual and it actually puts people a little in the yes pile, that we're gonna call them in.
Yeah.
So that was great, uh, and then, um, where was I headed with that? I don't remember, but the, the, the process of the, uh, the hiring is well underway after town meeting. And the modulars, uh, being voted in and, uh, so that'll open up another great classroom, um, teaching position, so. It's exciting, I think MCAS and AP exams are going on, I won't ruin it for Nicole, she's probably chomping at the bit to finish those, but graduations coming up and seniors have what, seven, yeah, seven days to go.
Seven days?
How many days?
Yeah, so.
Not that you're counting.
Hundred and fifty-eight hours, something like that, you know? You know, so it's, it's amazing, it's, the year is coming quickly, so. And the reason Paul's not here is he's still in Bridgewater, I didn't wanna make him drive back from Bridgewater and then drive back to Bridgewater.
Yeah.
Tonight, so.
Good, glad he did that.
Score some points there, but.
He didn't have to be out last night.
I know, I know, you know, Mr. Kendall was really kind to people last night with the school building committee meeting, so. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we have no assistant superintendent's report.
No.
And we have no.
No warrant approvals?
Minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
I have no.
Yeah, two twenty-nineteens, I was not here.
I did not have any, um, changes.
No changes?
So the only, so the only thing I, I was gonna ask is whether, you know, to my point earlier about, um, what we discussed relative to Pittaway uh, and the budget, uh, and clarifying that heading at least to say, you know, what we were discussing, we were discussing the revolving fund budget and not the, not the Pittaway budget as a whole. Because I don't want somebody to read that and, and, and there's a statement in there that, that clarifies, but I don't want somebody to look at that and say, hey, this is all it takes to run our preschool, which
True.
Clearly, clearly not the case.
Right.
Doesn't, whatever, four hundred thousand dollars, doesn't, doesn't cost four hundred thousand dollars to run, run Pittaway, so.
Right.
That, that was the only question I have for the group is, is, um, what page is that on?
Uh, true.
Page two.
Page two.
And at the top of page three, that's where it explains against the revolving account.
Right.
So maybe just the, the header column changed, preschool revolving budget?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if we wanna, I don't know, I mean, I know it's, it's also.
Yeah, I think it's worth clarifying, that, that's, yeah, I, I mean, I guess they, even looking at the, the line of the motion, right? It's a motion to approve the budget, but it was revolving account budget, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, because, because it, it wa, it didn't, uh, account for all the general fund, um.
So, is that the motion we did, to approve the budget, or did we say?
I think we, we approved the revolving.
Correct.
Revolving account, yeah. So I think to Paul's point, if we change the, where it says preschool budget heading to preschool revolving account budget, and then the motion was to approve the revolving account budget.
Okay.
Make those change, two changes, I think, then you get there, yeah.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept as amended, April twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen?
Well, and so, did you get, did you get what we, what we're trying to change?
Yeah, sure, yeah, good, yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, those are good.
Any gifts and donations?
Find my glasses, there they are. So, okay, so funding finally came in, so AFI twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars to Mindes Outdoor Experience Program, Needham Bank, one hundred dollars for the AHS Reality Fair, Pfizer Foundation Matching Gifts Program, two hundred and fifty dollars to Mindes, uh, and the Middlesex Bank, a hundred dollars for the AHS Reality Fair, for a total of twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Excellent, do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Member updates, we start with you, Nicole?
First of all, I do apologize for being late.
That's quite a game.
Always a game. And I was a little stranded at the high school because I don't have a car, but that's okay, one of my friends drove me here.
Oh, that's good.
Um, I was in school, let's see what's happening, APs have started, um, I took Spanish yesterday and literature and composition this morning, they are mind-numbing as always. But they're good, Student Council has provided goldfish and water, so when we take our ten-minute break in between the four hours of testing, we have something to look forward to. Um, yeah, seniors, uh, it's really winding down, we have seven days left and then we have our week of exams and in that exam week, we have, uh, three sessions of a financial competency course, which is really cool.
Excellent.
Like, you learn how to budget and how to work with credit cards, I obviously am not competent in any financial things, but I will be. Um, and we also have one session of signs of suicide, which we did sophomore year, so they're reintroducing that before we go off to college.
Yeah.
Um, and then there will be the whole walk around all the schools and making cards for the incoming freshmen and
I love that when they walk up.
Community service, and also really cool this near, this year, Student Council has organized a career fair and a reality fair. So you pick a career and then get, um, a salary from that and you go around and have to buy a car and have to buy a house and have to have children and all those things, so you learn how to go through life, the game of life, so to speak, yeah.
It's a game of life, yeah.
That's so funny, yeah.
And then after that, it's senior week and then graduation, which is crazy.
It's crazy, I know, it's just a month away.
Enjoy it.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And you had the Out of Darkness Walk, right?
Yes, oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to make it, but, um.
And we also, NHS, we had our Out of the Darkness Walk, which was a great success, we made sixteen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand total.
Wow.
Um, and we had made a lot of, from fundraising, just with our talent show and other events in the past, so we have more than twenty thousand dollars
Oh, my gosh.
to donate to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention.
Total that all year that you.
Yep.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic.
Congratulations.
We're really proud of that.
Great.
Yeah, that's great.
Did you make your college decision?
Yes, so.
Oh, you were here. You missed, she missed it.
But I missed it too.
Actually, there's a new story.
A new story, what?
Yeah, so I committed to BC, uh. Yeah, so I committed to B.C., uh, and then now it's Northeastern due to financial reasons.
It's breaking news.
Yeah, you can't go wrong with either one of those.
Yeah. So.
Oh, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations on that, too.
Uh, I am excited for that mascot.
Yeah, it's so great.
So it's Northeastern now.
Wow, okay.
Congratulations. Again.
Yeah.
I know.
Mr. Kendall?
Uh, so, yeah, we, uh, I had, uh, I went to Creative Arts Night at Mendez, which is always good to have those kind of open house nights and see what the kids are doing. And, um, we had, obviously had town meeting, so, uh, congratulations to everybody who's put in a lot of work on the, you know, we had a lot of, while there wasn't huge jet exclusions and other things, it was one of the most, um, ambitious and productive, uh, capital, uh, town meetings we've had, right? So there was, uh, you know, some, some very substantial projects that, that, that were pushed forward and, and it was really gonna move the, the whole town, uh, forward, so congratulations to, uh, the town management and the things that, the people that have put in a lot of time and effort on those projects, so. Um, and last night we had a building committee meeting. We, uh, it was a very quick meeting that we basically had it to approve the designer RFS, which was approved by MSBA the other day. That will go into the central register and appear on May fifteenth. We will get, uh, applications will be due back to the district, uh, June twelfth. Um, and I believe that puts us on schedule for, um, having our first design, designer, uh, selection panel meeting, uh, July ninth. Um, that will be when, uh, the panel shortlists the, the applicants. Um, and then I assume we will choose to interview and then we'll subsequently schedule that, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And again, I, I, and I believe I, I touched base, um, and Jim, you weren't there last night, I shared it with the committee. I did touch base with, with, with Michael, Mr. Herbert, um, and I, I believe he is gonna, uh, participate in the panel. He's not gonna designate someone, at least at this point, that's his thought, so. A, a, as I mentioned before, we get, uh, we get three, uh, people of the sixteen, uh, on the designer selection panel. The superintendent or designee, uh, Jim is gonna participate, um, the school committee designee, which you, uh, pointed me to last time, uh, two meetings ago. Um, and, uh, then the CEO, in our case, town manager or designee, and Michael is probably gonna participate, so. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Really haven't been here in all, we've seen you a lot.
I know, we haven't, I haven't been here in a month.
I've been very sick, um, like in the hospital, sick, so.
Oh, no. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, but, um, we, I did go to the Driscoll Scholarship Meeting today, so we were a little sick.
Oh, great, thank you.
Um, but I missed town meeting because of being so ill.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're on the mend.
Yeah, but I'm almost two weeks, I'm almost, I've been on antibiotics.
How you doing, Nicole?
No, I have antibiotics and I'm fine.
Right, room. Yeah, lots of room.
But, uh, you know, we're going on two weeks and we're really bad, so.
Oh, that is too bad.
Yeah, but, yeah, so we've got safety committee coming up and we have, um, the wellness committee coming up as well, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right, um, I did, I did do the walk, the Out of the Darkness Walk at the high school with my sister. We did the walk. So that was, yeah, it was a nice attendance and, um, I'm encouraged about all the money that was raised, and, and especially over the year. Um, town meeting, we all went to that. Um, I did go to the Sustainability Committee, hosted a net zero forum, um, at the library. Paul, you were there briefly at the beginning, right? Um, that was a good turnout. That was just a, an initial meeting to kind of gauge what, how, how the residents think about that and get, talk, just talk about, um, going net zero by twenty forty, I think. You'll be hearing more about that in the town and just what, what can the town do in their decisions. Actually, especially with, if we're building a new school too, we'll want to look into, uh, be aware, you know?
Already Mendez got.
Um, so, anyway, that was a, that was a good, uh, meeting, so.
So town meeting, Creative Arts Night, um, I was just gonna share one of the little tidbit. So I think, um, shared a couple of meetings ago that Nicole and I had gone to this school start time Saturday morning thing. But what Nicole doesn't know, I think, yet, is that Dover Sherburne, after having heard from you, has voted to change their start time, starting next year, right?
Wow, that's so cool.
Starting this coming school year?
I believe it's next year, yeah.
Yep.
Wow.
So.
I liked that guy, he was very nice.
Yeah, and he, he followed up a couple of times with me and with Jim and got some more information and then he sent an email back just saying, want to let you know.
Yep.
So.
Wow.
Power of the student voice, there you go.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
That is all I've got.
It's great.
Well, it's so interesting. Uh, I, I don't think I have anything within the district, but yesterday I spoke at two different classes at Framingham State.
Oh, wow.
Um, I think I got asked, you, my, my daughter attends Framingham State as an education major and just the one of the professors knew that I, her mom was a school committee member. Invited me in to speak about the school committee to the, uh, the teacher candidates.
Oh, no. Yeah.
So they understand what a school committee does and the role, their role in the teacher's world. But what was really fascinating is they asked a lot of questions about school start times.
Oh, wow.
Uh, it was a really, a lot, in both classes, it was a really lively conversation. They asked a lot of questions about a lot of things, but they were most interested in the whole experience with the school's start time, so. It's, it's, it was encouraging to me that young people are thinking about these things. And even they asked a lot about, um, you know, their, their understanding, you know, I started by saying, like, you might not ever meet your school committee member, ever attend a meeting or, or, um, see their face. But they're determining your salary, they're determining the policies that you have to abide to all day long. They're picking the person that's gonna be your boss and, or he's picking the person, or she is picking the person that's gonna be your direct boss. So, you know, they're more important in your world than you might think. And so you might, before you take a job, you'll take a look at the, um, the district's budget. Take a look at the superintendent's contract, take a look at the teacher's contract.
Watch a video, yeah.
The superintendent's evaluation, right?
Exactly, so, so anyhow, it was, it was a great experience and I, and like I said, I think I got invited because, you know, my daughter's there, but the professor did ask me if I would be willing to make it a annual thing.
Oh, neat, yeah.
So, uh, but it's, it's great that the kids wanna.
Want yourself a recurring gig, I can say.
Yeah, and it's only three miles away.
Perfect.
So that's, that's all I've got.
If I may, I, I, I did forget one thing, just so, I want to thank, uh, um, the Friends of Ashland Public Library, uh, we love Ashland and everybody that. I did participate in the candidate's forum as well, um, and so I, I guess I just missed it on my calendar when I was looking, um, so, but, uh, that's something I do every year and I know it takes a lot of work to put, uh, put on, so, um, thank you for, for everybody. And, you know, this year we do have some contested races, so.
Mm, we do.